With mine, and before we get started, I'd like to ask you to do our invocation. I'd also like to ask you to include prayers for firefighter Cunningham.
Yes, absolutely. Let's pray together. Our God, it only seems to be fitting that that is where we begin, that we are reminded today that tragedy lurks in the most unexpected of places, and that you do not always prevent it. But you do offer yourself as the God of all comfort when tragedy does hit. And we pray that you make yourself real to John, to Tammy, to the rest of the family, to those that are close to him through this ordeal, through this journey of dealing with injury and recovery of both health and property. Keep them strong and help them to look towards you, and may they feel your presence and your comfort in a very tangible way, even tonight. And Lord, we just want to invite you to once again blanket us with your protection, with your guidance, with your grace, and with your counsel throughout this city, for those who serve it in so many different ways, for those who live in it, and those who lead it. I pray that for tonight's meeting, the council and the mayor and the city staff gathered here today will receive your divine wisdom and insight to wisely administer the affairs of this city. We pray these things in the name of your Son, Jesus Christ. Amen.
Thank you very much. Okay, I'd like to call the regular meeting of the Milton City Council for July 1st, 2013 to order. The city clerk will please call the roll and make general announcements.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. I'll be happy to call roll for the July 1st, 2013 regular meeting. I would like to remind those in attendance to please silence all cell phones at this time. Those in attendance this evening who would like to provide public comment either during the public hearing or during the call for public comment, you are required to complete a public comment card prior to speaking on an item. There is no public comment for consent agenda items or items under first presentation. Those called to speak will be taken in the order that the speaker cards were received by the city clerk prior to the beginning of tonight's meeting. All speakers will please identify themselves by name, address, and organization if applicable. The city council may allow public comment on either an agenda item or general public comment from a representative of such an organized group or association, provided that the individual shall file a notarized affidavit that they have the authority to speak on behalf of said organization on a form provided by the city clerk prior to the agenda item being called. Demonstration of any sort within this chamber is prohibited, so please refrain from any applause, cheering, booing, outbursts, or dialogue with any person speaking. Please show the same respect to the person speaking that you will expect to receive yourself. Anyone in violation will be asked to leave. As I call roll, please confirm your attendance. Mayor Joe Lockwood.
Present.
Councilmember Karen Thurman.
Here.
Councilmember Matt Kuntz.
Here.
Councilmember Bill Lusk.
Here.
Councilmember Burke Hewitt.
Here.
Councilmember Joe Longoria.
Here.
Councilmember Lance Large.
Here.
Would everyone please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance?
We pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic on which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I want to welcome everybody here tonight. Good evening. Certainly, it's fitting that I have a proclamation for firefighter appreciation. Certainly want everybody to know that our thoughts and prayers are with John and his family, and if you guys will keep us posted, and we all, anything we can do, please let us know. Will the city clerk please say on the first item?
Our first item is approval of the meeting agenda. This is agenda item number 13-156.
Okay. The new staff would like to add a executive session to discuss pending litigation and land acquisition. Is there anything else anybody knows? Okay. Ask for a motion on that.
I'll make a motion to approve the meeting agenda adding executive session to discuss pending litigation and land acquisition.
Second. Okay, a motion by Councilmember Hewitt, second by Councilmember Lusk. All in favor?
Before you take that vote, it's actually, let's go ahead and have it for litigation. It's pending litigation because it's current. So let's have litigation and land acquisition.
Okay. So we've got a, need a motion for litigation and land acquisition.
Do I need to restate the motion?
Just as long as you're good with.
You're good with that, Bill? Okay, I got a motion, and a motion by Councilmember Hewitt, second by Councilmember Lusk for a, to add litigation and land acquisition to our agenda. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That's unanimous. All right. Do we have any public comments, city?
We do not, sir.
Okay. Let's move to the consent agenda then.
Our first item, approval of the June 17th, 2013 regular city council meeting minutes, agenda item number 13-157. Next, approval of a construction services agreement between the City of Milton and Triscapes Inc. for Darby Road culvert replacement, agenda item number 13-158. Approval of a construction services agreement between the City of Milton and Triscapes Inc. for the installation of a vehicle gate and a pervious driveway at Friendship Community Park. This is agenda item number 13-159.
Mayor, I move to approve the consent agenda as prepared by staff.
Second. Okay, I've got a motion by Councilmember Lusk, second by Councilmember Kuntz. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That's unanimous. We'll move on to our reports and presentations, and I'll take the first one. I've got a few minutes proclamation, recognizing the MDA firefighter appreciation. Fill the boot campaign for the Muscular Dystrophy Association is a 59-year American tradition that takes place at busy street intersections in thousands of cities across the United States and Canada. Since 1954, firefighters have raised over 500 million for MDA, including raising 25.2 million in 2012. Public service resulting from this labor of love is nothing short of incredible. Over the last seven years, the City of Milton Department has collected over $350,000 from generous citizens for local children and adults fighting muscular dystrophy. With approximately 119 patients registered in the City of Milton, the support of the fire department hits close to home. In 2012, the department raised 65,620, which was the highest in metro Atlanta, and the second largest in the state of Georgia. Recently, the City of Milton has completed another successful year fill in the boot, raising over 65,000. Angel Brown, the area director in the Atlanta office of MDA, is excited to support the department year up year and is here with us tonight. Also, please welcome Chief Bob Edgar, members of the Milton, City of Milton Fire Department. So I'm going to read this proclamation and then ask you guys to come forward. MDA City of Milton firefighter appreciation, whereas dedicated and selfless firefighters in Milton provide vital and life-saving services to the citizens of their community, and whereas, at a moment's notice, these men and women risk their lives subduing fires and rescuing those trapped in infernos, as well as saving citizens from emergencies that could have become deadly situations. And whereas, Georgia firefighters contribute significantly to the continued well-being of Georgians through their outstanding commitment to community service. Their sense of duty and responsibility is evidenced by their hundreds of volunteer hours and annual boot drive to collect funds to fight muscular dystrophy. And whereas, the firefighters in the City of Milton unselfishly donate their time and energy to supporting the Muscular Dystrophy Association, raising more than $350,000 over our seven-year partnership. And whereas, many of Milton's most deserving citizens have benefited from the funds raised by firefighters in the Fill the Boot campaign, and these public servants make invaluable contributions to our community in all the tasks they perform. Now therefore, we, the mayor and the city council of the City of Milton hereby proclaim June through September as MDA firefighter appreciation time in the City of Milton, and encourage all citizens of Milton to recognize and support the efforts of these firefighters on behalf of MDA, given under my hand and seal of the City of Milton, Georgia on the first day of July, 2013. If you guys would join us up there?
Yes.
You've got to be exact. You've got to be very mental. You've got to get all y'all up here. Y'all are the ones that are important.
That's right. Get behind you, Mike. Follow me.
Get on in, yeah.
There we go.
Oh, I'm so sorry.
One, two, three. Thank you. Thank y'all.
Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Oh.
Somebody making a face?
We did it again?
We appreciate it.
That's what Photoshop would think for.
Yeah.
Fixing this thing.
Yeah, we can fix that.
Yes, we could.
And before you guys leave, I always want to take every opportunity to just thank you guys, our public safety and everything you do, because to me, it's one of the most selfless acts. And again, like I say, I always tell people, I say, you know, you've got to acknowledge and appreciate these guys because they get up every morning and they put their neck out there for us, for folks that don't, they don't even know. So thank you again for everything you do.
Thank you.
All right, let's do our first presentation.
Our first item is consideration of VRC 1314-13175 Hopewell Road, Duke Land Group LLC, to rezone from AG1 Agricultural to R3 Residential to develop 11 single-family lots on 9.04 acres. Agenda item number 13-160. Next, consideration of an ordinance to amend Chapter 10 Buildings and Building Regulations to provide for enforcement of certain applicable codes relative to the safe use of real property in accordance with Georgia law, to repeal any conflicting provisions, and for other purposes. Agenda item number 13-161. And final, an ordinance to amend Chapter 54 Telecommunications Sections 54-3, 54-5A, 54-6F, 54-7A1, and 54-7A2, to include the definition of modifications, to revise maximum telecommunication tower heights, and to provide for an expedited variance process. Agenda item number 13-162.
Do I have a motion? First presentation items?
Mayor, I'll move to approve the reading of the first presentation items.
Second.
Okay, I've got a motion by Councilmember Lusk, second by Councilmember Longoria. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That's unanimous. Okay, we have no items under our public hearing or zoning agenda, so let's move on to unfinished business. We have one item.
This is HD 13-01, consideration of ordinance for historic designation of the property located at 15690 Hopewell Road, the Hopewell House, agenda item number 13-152. Joint public hearing with the Historic Preservation Commission and the city council was held on May 20th, 2013, first presentation at the June 17th, 2013 regular council meeting. Ms. Kathy Field.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the city council. As the city clerk said, this is to ask her approval for the designation of the Hopewell House as historic. This shows the site of the historic Hopewell House at the intersection of Hopewell Road and Birmingham Road. The subject site contains 2.5 acres. It's currently zoned AG1 and C1. It's developed with one existing house and several outbuildings. The house was constructed in the early to mid 1840s. There's a picture of the house. Some elevations. In terms of contributing elements of the structure, the double penthouse, exterior parson's rooms, and front porch are all thought to be original to the house. The dog trot breezeway and enclosed kitchen structure probably, was probably added in the 1960s. You can see the picture of the two parson rooms right at the very front as you walk in, and that was originally a porch as opposed to an enclosed structure in the very front. And then you walk into two rooms. Those were original. And then lastly, the kitchen in the back was added in the 60s, the 1960s. The non-contributing elements include the second story, the rear porch and master bedroom, and the metal roof. And there are some pictures of the non-contributing elements. History of the designation process, it was recommended for approval by the Georgia Department of Natural Resources on March 7, 2013, subsequently recommended for approval by the City of Milton Historic Preservation Commission on May 20th, 2013. And today, we ask that the Milton City Council designate the structure known as the Hopewell House located at 15690 Hopewell Road as historic. Any questions?
Any questions for Karen?
I have one question. The map we have shows that front little parcel that's zoned C1, not in the red. Is that going to be part of the historic designation, or is it just the other part that's not?
No, the whole site, including the C1.
Because the map we have doesn't show.
The site plan, I believe, does show the C1, because I did see that.
The map has, what is outlined in red is just the stuff that's the AG1 zoning. That's why I want to make sure I.
Yeah, why don't you just get back to it?
It was one of the first pages.
Right. Unfortunately.
There we are.
Right in the front there. Mine is showing a C1 zoning right in the very, on the very corner of the site in the front, right at the corner of Hopewell and Birmingham. That's the one I've got.
See, it looks like the red outline is only around the AG1. That's why.
Yes, yeah. No, the whole parcel is included within the designation. That zoning carries along, but we won't be using it for the C1 use, obviously.
Anyone else?
One question. Can, if put forward with the historical designation on this property, can that, with the way the law states, be undone by a future council?
My initial thought would be that it could be, just because typically what the council could give, the council can take away. Now, I'm not sure what that might have to do with state, with state findings in the same issue, because I don't think we would have the authority to undo any state action.
Which essentially, we are complusing, complying with state regulations here if we pass this. So it more than likely will not be undone, if that's the case.
I think it's very likely would not be undone.
I should indicate that part of our intent of moving it through the process of having it declared historic is to then take it to the next step, which is to nominate it for the National Register. And nominating it locally as an historic structure is the first step of that process.
That would be very difficult.
Well, I mean, this is an economic question. This isn't just a historical question, so.
How's that?
Well, you know, anytime, this is a city, I mean, we're going to go into discussion, and I'm the only lone voice in the wilderness on this, but the reality is, is that if we were to create legislation on a piece of property that the city owns, that ultimately is going to be a $1.2 million investment for the taxpayers of the City of Milton. And then we put historic designation legislation upon a piece of property, then we immediately eliminate any kind of demand for that property, which immediately creates a depreciated asset. So, you know, from my standpoint, what I look at, I know we paid $250,000 for it, and then we're going to throw in another $900,000 into the property. And then we put this legislation on there, I just wonder why, if we are doing this now, this is essentially where the rubber meets the road, there is no going back. And if we're going to have a piece of property that's owned by the city taxpayers, by the city, you know, for $1.2 million, and the highest per capita usage ratio that we're going to have for anything that we're doing, it just doesn't make sense to me. Nor does it make sense to the seniors that live in my district, which is where I am. I mean, those, the seniors that I talk to up there, the Hope, I'm, we talk, those that live up there, the one question they ask specifically, whenever I go to the Hopewell Baptist Church and ask specifically, you know, what can we do, the one question they have is, why did the city own this piece of property? And I don't think the city should be responsible for owning historical designation properties. I'd rather a foundation owned it. I'd rather a, another group took advantage of that, but if we're going to have this thing, we pass it through. Right now, this is where the rubber meets the road, and it doesn't make fiscal sense to me, at $1.2 million, which is ultimately going to be the end of the project, which is what we're talking about. If we're talking about meals on wheels, that's a whole other issue. I mean, we can do that somewhere else, at the Christ Community Church with the partnership we're talking about right now. We can look at more or less expensive places to run that. But, you know, if we go ahead and make this a historical designation, then we're going into a process where the city owns property and we depreciate it to the taxpayers, and it doesn't, doesn't make sense to me.
Okay, Jim?
Yeah, I'm not sure I get the tie-in between something being historical and somebody other than the city owning the property. I think there's plenty of examples nationwide of historical properties being owned by private citizens. So the whole idea that us designating something historic somehow depletes the value, or takes it off the market, or makes it less attractive, or something like that, I think is a leap of faith that's unwarranted in this particular case.
Okay, Karen?
Couple things. Number one, we're not getting ready to spend $900,000 on this piece of property, are we?
Are we going to renovate it or not?
I don't know whether.
I've not seen a number that high.
Are we, one point, when I.
No, I think, I think our initial discussion was, was no more than 600.
What's budgeted is, I believe 700,000 is that first cost estimate we got, and I believe everything since then has come in at a lower number. And Carter can check me if I'm wrong there, but I want to say that preliminary numbers are in the six something range.
Yeah, it's going to be about that.
And number two, if it went to a private foundation, it'd be off our, we wouldn't be collecting any taxes on it anyway, because private foundations wouldn't be paying any City of Milton tax, correct?
Depending on their designation.
If they're a 501(c), three, four, whatever, then they would not be paying any tax. So it would be kind of off of our income-producing property, whether or not the city owns it, or whether or not the, another.
But, but it being declared historic has nothing to do with its taxability. It's simply a city-owned piece of property like every park in the city. I mean, so, it doesn't really, that's not the dis.
But, but instead of, I mean, he mentioned having a, a private foundation own it, that would also take it off our revenue sources.
Likely, to the city manager's point, depends upon their tax designation with the feds, but likely.
Most private foundations, their whole purpose is to be tax exempt.
City void the taxes, I understand.
But if we have it, it's, go ahead, I'm sorry. I don't believe the fact that it's designated as historic, nor the fact that the city owns it, precludes the city from selling it at a future date and still maintaining its historic designation.
At a much lower value.
Pardon me?
At a much lower value.
Why?
If you put any historical designation price on something that is an asset, that immediately eliminates demand, lowers the price of that asset.
So you're saying George Washington's house is worth less because he lived in it?
Or property to Williamsburg, Virginia, or.
You know.
This house is not George Washington's house.
Well, and let me, you know, let me address that real quick, and to Matt's point, you know, sometimes that, that can affect, because it limits the, what you can do with the property. And, you know, we've all heard, some folks are not happy the city, you know, spent, spent money on it, but there's always going to be people out there that, no matter what you buy or whatever, they're, they're not going to be happy with it. Sometimes, as a governing body, we have to make decisions that ultimately are in the best interest of, of our city, and that doesn't always mean only financial. And by designated historic and by purchasing this and, and using it for our citizens, we're saving something that can't be replaced. And, no. So to your point, I see, you know, you, you could argue that it may drop the value, but the other value for our citizens and our city, you know, historical value, you know, you have to weigh that, so. And everybody has a different opinion on that, so I'm not arguing that one way.
Karen?
My only question is, is there a reason we do need to include the little section that is C1 that really does, is not historic in with that, or is it better off just to include the parcel that is at the actual property where the house is located?
You know, I guess you could do either or. The, the reality, though, is that, as that intersection, the construction plans for its future are being formulated, the bulk of that C1 property is going to be used in the construction project.
It may be part of the roundabout, right?
That's, that's correct.
I mean, you know, I don't want to just say no for the sake of saying no. If there was a solution that could be offered here, it basically would be one where we just wait. You know, I, I would rather, and there isn't one unfortunately, but there needs to be a Milton Historical Society, like there is an Alfredo, or maybe some combination. But, you know, you look at the Margaret Mitchell House, it's not owned by the City of Atlanta, you know, they have foundations running that. You know, I think they could run it better. I, I don't think that we should be wasting resources on this particular one. Is it a historical property? I've been there, I like it, it looks good. You know, I could see it being historical from that perspective. I just don't think that the city should own it. And when we go about doing this, you know, if we were to ever sell this property for ever, we wouldn't get anything for it. If we had more money into it, you know, I think it would be a drain for us 10, 20 years from now, as such. You know, would some other organization take better care of it? Potentially, they're just not in existence to do it right now. But I think right now, rushing into this, this is where the rubber meets the road, and if we do this, and then we fix up the property, you know, basically on a per capita basis, I just don't think we're going to get the use out of it that we think we will. I think that we will be not showing prudence when it comes to taxpayer dollars, and I'm the lone voice in the wilderness on this, but someone's got to say it. So, good luck.
Throughout this whole discussion, the last two or three years on Mansell House, the analogy with the, what did I say?
It says man.
An analogy with the Mansell House, and the fact that it is owned by the City of Alpharetta. It's managed by the Alpharetta Historic Society, but is used as an events venue, an events facility, and it is revenue-producing. So it's not a drain on the City of Alpharetta. It does produce revenue, and I see the, the same use for the Hopewell House up here, not only for senior services, but for other events, weddings, receptions, meetings, and the sort. And it, being on the Alpharetta Historic Society Board, I know where the numbers lie there, and it is revenue-producing.
Jim?
Joe? Yeah. I just got to believe that we are mixing our thoughts on what it is we're trying to vote for right now. Right now, we're trying to vote and support either the idea that this structure is historic or it's not. It has nothing to do with what the intended use of the property is. It has nothing to do with whether or not we're going to spend $600,000 on it. It has nothing to do with any of that. If you believe the structure is historic, vote yes. If you don't believe it's historic, vote no. But don't, don't pretend that it's not historic because it's going to cost us 600,000, and don't pretend that it is historic if it's going to generate revenue through, you know, wedding receptions. I, I don't see where those two things come together.
There's a consequence for making this kind of decision. It just happens, it always does, as part of an economic process.
Well, if you had some hard facts to back that up with, Matt, I'd be willing to believe you, you have nothing except anecdotes.
I have a Hoover Institute out of Stanford University. Why didn't you share that data with us? Because I figured I didn't have to. If you would like me to do it, I'd be glad to, but those things are there. I mean, it's historically the way things work. It's just causes a depreciated asset. That is all, you know, I mean, if you, if you build a park, you know, it's a depreciating asset from now on, because you make the changes there too, but you have a lot more use out of it, you know? And that's it. The reality is, is that is the way things work when it comes to economics. It creates legislation on these.
Well, I think that the ordinance we're voting on, with the proclamation that we're voting.
And it, being on the Alpharetta Historic Society Board, uh, I know where the numbers lie there, and it is revenue-producing.
Joe?
Joe? Yeah. I just got to, uh, believe that we are mixing our thoughts on what it is we're trying to vote for right now. Right now, we're trying to vote and support either the idea that this structure is historic or it's not. It has nothing to do with what the intended use of the property is. It has nothing to do with whether or not we're going to spend 600,000 on it. It has nothing to do with any of that. If you believe the structure is historic, vote yes. If you don't believe it's historic, vote no. But don't, don't pretend that it's not historic because it's going to cost us 600,000, and don't pretend that it is historic if it's going to generate revenue through, you know, wedding receptions. I, I, I don't see where those two things come together.
There's a consequence for making this kind of decision. It just happens, it always does, as part of an economic process.
Well, if you had some hard facts to back that up with, Matt, I'd be willing to believe you, you have nothing except anecdotes.
I have the Hoover Institute out of Stanford University.
Why didn't you share that data with us?
Because I figured I didn't have to. If you would like me to do it, I'd be glad to, but those things are there. I mean, it's historically the way things work. It's just causes a depreciated asset. That is all, you know, I mean, if you, if you build a park, you know, it's a depreciating asset from now on, because you make the changes there too, but you have a lot more use out of it, you know? And that's it. The reality is, is that is the way things work when it comes to economics. It creates legislation on these properties.
Well, I think that the ordinance we're voting on, where the proclamation that we're voting on, whatever it is we're voting on, has nothing to do with what the intended use of the property is. It has to do with the designation and supporting the, uh, idea that this place is historic, which I think it's a hard way, it's a hard time getting around that.
Karen, I think you want to comment?
Yeah. Um, although I have, at times, not been in favor of us spending the amount of money we've talked about spending on the Hope Well House, I do believe it is a true asset of the city, and I believe that the only way we will ever be able to make sure it is preserved, whether or not we own it or somebody else owns it down the road, is to have it designated historic. And like I said, uh, to me, I'm looking at this as, yes, I want the house preserved, I want it, uh, and I think the only way to do that is to designate it historic. When it comes to, are we going to spend 600, 700, 8, 900, that may be a whole different question that we'll have to, have to discuss. But, uh, whether or not we can get away with spending 300 or 400 and, and achieve the purpose we want to achieve. But I believe that the only way we're going to make sure that that house, which is a asset for the city, continues to be an asset for the city regardless of who owns it, is by designating it historic.
Okay. Uh, you know, and again, to, to pull us all back together, um, just like Joe said, it, this is, we are just voting on whether to, uh, designate this property as historic or not. To Matt's point, I certainly get where you're coming from. You, if you lock in a historic designation on something, it won't allow somebody to do something different with it one day. But on the flip side, it also preserves the asset and the oldest house structure that we have in, in the history of Milton. So, with that said, you know, we've got an ordinance here, and I'll ask for a motion that, just to, whether we, we designate this property as historic or not.
Mr. Mayor? A move to approve an ordinance for historic designation of the property located at 15690 Hope Well Road, the Hope Well House, agenda item number 13-152.
Second.
Okay, a motion for approval from Councilmember Lust, second from Councilmember Larch. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, please say aye. Any opposed? That's, uh, six to one passes. Thank you, and thank you everyone for your discussion on that. All right, we can move on to new business.
Ratification and modifications to the Milton Strategic Plan 2012 to 2015, clarifying key stakeholders, agenda item number 13163. Mr. Chris Lagerblum.
Mayor, Council, I wanted to get this one in front of you before too much time elapsed from the, um, time that we met together in, with the council and staff retreat. Um, the modifications that you'll see tonight simply clarify a couple of things, and it clarifies a couple of things that I thought were very key and very critical and very specific, um, during our discussion, and that was the two stakeholders, the key stakeholders, uh, moving from the stakeholder being families, including youth, to, to it reading residential community, and moving from equestrian community to rural landowners. Um, that has changed consistently throughout the strategic plan, as well as changing the champions that were for many of the strategies, because we've simply had some turnover in our staff and to make sure that the right names were with the right projects moving forward. Um, that's the extent of the changes that I'm bringing forward at this point. If there are further changes that need to be done, they can be done at a later date. And there were some that were, um, debatable and questionable as to whether or not we move forward with them or not. These, I think, were very straightforward and very much, um, desired by the council, certainly supported by the staff. Um, and I, again, just want to bring this forward, since you adopted the document itself initially by, um, resolution in order to make changes to it, and these, I believe, since they changed stakeholders are substantive enough that we need to adopt a resolution in its place to make those modifications. Be happy to answer any questions.
Okay, you have any questions, Joe?
Yeah, Chris, yeah. Understand the updating of the terms, I, I thought that was completely in line with what's going on, but we didn't update the city council members.
We can do that.
Yeah. Well, I mean, since we're specifically calling out it's the 2012 to 2015, it makes some sense. I know the new council members have participated at this point in time, so it makes some sense.
We, that's a very good point taken. I, I know it was included with the council members that were here when the document originally published, um, so that was the rationale for why those names were in there. But, yeah, I'd be happy to make those modifications. Unless there's any council objection to that, which doesn't appear to be.
Yeah.
Put everybody's name in there.
It's really straightforward. It's nothing more than, um, just cleaning those couple of areas up, um, and, uh, look for your support.
Okay. Nothing else, do I have a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve the ratification of modifications to the Milton Strategic Plan 2012-2015, clarifying key stakeholders, agenda item number 13163.
Second motion? Yeah, a motion by Councilmember Coontz, second by, uh, Councilmember Lust for approval. All in favor, please say aye. Any opposed? That's unanimous. We'll move on to, uh, reports. Um, just want to say, yeah, we, uh, we've had some productive meetings and classes and, uh, the GMA, uh, convention last weekend, and, uh, enjoyed getting, spending time with you guys, and, and, uh, hopefully it was, uh, rewarding and, uh, successful for everybody. So, thank you, uh, and thanks for, to our city staff for setting things up. Anybody in council want to, Karen?
Now, I just want to remind everybody that we've got, it takes a Village Milton Style tomorrow night at the Crab Apple Government Center at seven o'clock, um, to kind of discuss. This is a community-sponsored event, not a city-sponsored event, but I'm sure they would appreciate any of us that can come and really talk about suicide prevention among our young people. Um, we have had four, uh, suicides in the last year of either Milton High School students or recent graduates, and so the community's coming together to try to address this issue and see what we can do to prevent it. So, it is, the first meeting's tomorrow night, and it looks like we've got about 50 people attending.
Where is that, Karen?
It's at Crab Apple Government Center in Alpharetta.
No problem, but it's in Milton, or middle of Milton.
Yeah.
Between Milton.
Yes.
Bill?
Last week in Savannah, I met with, uh, Chris Owens from the City of Alpharetta Council, and talked about, uh, possibilities of hooking up to their greenway sometime in the future. And I learned from Chris that there's, uh, they've applied for a grant and some funding to extend their greenway up towards the Forsyth County line, and, uh, they've been talking with Forsyth County also, uh, and have gotten their support. And this was proposed more as a, you know, regional-type initiative, regional planning initiative. And, uh, and I discussed with Chris about the possibility of, uh, Milton hooking up with, uh, Alpharetta's greenway, and thought that, uh, by us joining with them, uh, it might enhance our, all of our chances of getting that funding to expand, uh, the greenway and bringing it into Milton. And this morning, met with Chris and with Carter, and went over several, uh, possible routes for it, and, uh, well, Chris Owens was there also. And, uh, we're going to pursue this further, and we'll do a couple of field trips out there and determine, uh, you know, if there are any viable routes, and, uh, keep in touch with, uh, Alpharetta, uh, as to their progress. Apparently, they're going to be interviewed sometime down the road, with, probably within the next couple of months, as to, uh, whether or not, uh, their plan meets with the regional, uh, planning for this, uh, funding. So, keep you, uh, advised as this moves along. But, uh, I think it'd be a great, uh, great addition to our, our, uh, trail system. Obviously, it would expand the, uh, accessibility to probably almost, uh, 25 or 30 miles of Big Creek Greenway. Forsyth County is in the process of acquiring, and Ken can speak to this probably more accurately than I can, but I think they're in the land acquisition process for the phase up to, almost to, uh, Sonny Mountain. So, it opened up from Sonny Mountain all the way down to, uh, Roswell, and eventually, hopefully, the world.
That's a long trail.
I would agree with that.
I've been, I've been on that trail for a while, so. Anyhow, um, we'll keep you updated on that, and, uh, I'm optimistic that, uh, hopefully we'll get some funding ultimately where we can connect to that system.
Okay. Anybody else, Matt?
Two things. Um, the, uh, Fourth of July party on Thursday at Crab Apple, I'm going to be there and looking forward to that, so that'll be great. Uh, potential for rain out, though, so just keep, but, I'm going to talk to Peyton, he's going to wait to the last possible minute before he makes that call, so just be ready to go. Friends of the Milton Library meeting, by the way, we are collecting books. Um, I think we're in the several hundred as far as book collections, which has been great, um, but we're going to do a book sale on August the 10th, and, uh, you know, everybody should know about that, so if you have used books, we're collecting, and bring them by, we'd be glad to, uh, to take them.
Bring them by where?
Bring them by to the city, uh, Station 42, the Urban Farmhouse, or at David Shannon's in Shannondale Farm. And if we would like to volunteer, we can use plenty of them, everybody in the audience too, so.
Station 43.
43, excuse me, 43.
Question. Um, are you taking digital material as well, like CDs? I mean, CDs?
Uh, sure, bring them by, we'll sell anything.
I mean, libraries-
Although I'm not sure I want all your CDs.
I doubt I'd want all yours either.
These are all from Virginia.
Right.
And yours are all about financial analysis.
Absolutely. I'm a boring guy.
Virginia ones have to start, get the name.
All right. Thank you.
It's a CD George Washington lesson here.
All right, anybody else have anything? All right, we'll, uh, move on to Chris.
Uh, Mayor, Council, we've got one published staff report tonight, and then I've got a couple of others to make. Let me, uh, we'll start with the published staff report, which is a council update on EMS transport. Um, this is timely, because today being July the 1st, the new contract that we have with Rural Metro Ambulance went into effect today, and I don't know if you remember back in time, but we adopted that contract back in December, um, and we waited, three of us had adopted it, we waited for the fourth city to adopt it. They finally did, um, and that contract went into place today. Um, I can tell you that we went to the Region 3 EMS Subcommittee meeting last week, which was the group that will make a recommendation to the Region 3 EMS Council as to what to do, and their recommendation, which unanimously passed, was to leave the zone closed and to leave the ambulance providers that currently exist today, which is Rural Metro Ambulance, in as the zone provider. Um, and they will continue to hold the case potentially under advisement if the response times, um, start to lag again. Uh, but at this point, some of the things that Rural Metro had done in this 30 days had served well, and, meaning that the response times in Milton and Johns Creek had gotten better. Now, 30 days is hardly a long enough period to decide that you found a solution, that you go all of a sudden have a trend, that what you have is 30 days of decent, um, response times. Um, and what we've done, and what I'm going to ask the chief to speak about today, is what we've started to work with, with Rural Metro as a good solution, good longer-term solution for the City of Milton, one that will actually, um, enhance response times in Milton, one that will put from time to time the care of the patient in our firefighters' hands as opposed to ambulance company, when an ambulance just simply isn't available, and one that we feel fairly confident, um, we can deploy, um, with a about even, and I say about even, it even has a potentially revenue-positive option, um, of the, the subsidy that we no longer are paying Rural Metro. If you remember correctly, we had 132.5 we were paying a year, um, for Rural Metro that really didn't do anything to buy down response time. Um, we've got a, a solution that, uh, in, in fact, would put something that, uh, looks very similar to what you're seeing on your screen, um, in Milton as a first-response vehicle that is capable of EMS transport. These vehicles exist in, uh, Roswell and Johns Creek and in Sandy Springs today, so we're not the first in this game, um, but we are also one that would be negotiating with Rural Metro to figure out how, when, um, our equipment needed to be deployed, if it needed to be deployed, how it could be deployed as their equipment to be leased to them, um, so that they could then bill and reimburse us for its use. So, um, I'll let the chief talk a little bit about, uh, the operational realities and why it's better for Milton, why we believe it's better for Milton. Um, I'll let him run through a cost analysis then to kind of show you where we think, um, coming to you tonight to kind of say, you know, if you think this is a, a deal stopper, you know, stop us now, but if you think it warrants further exploration, um, time is really of the essence, because that contract went into place today. And, uh, what we are enjoying right now is Rural Metro has placed an ambulance in Milton, um, and they've placed one and have committed to keeping it here until we work out a partnership, if we can work out a partnership with them, um, so that we can, uh, do very similar to what the other outlined city is doing in Johns Creek, and that's, uh, tr- transporting people if we need to occasionally, uh, with our own staff. Um, I'm not the expert in this, the, the chief, uh, quite certainly is, so I'm going to turn it over to him and let him talk about, uh, um, how we got to this point, why we're here making this recommendation, what he believes some of the outcomes will be, and then we want to demonstrate to you how we believe we can do it, um, within the existing finances that have already been, uh, allocated to this type of, um, life-saving operation and see if we can get your support. So, having said that, I'll turn it over to Chief Edgar.
Thank you. Um, Mayor, Council, uh, the ambulance that you see, um, on your screen there, um, I've actually already purchased that unit, and it's in the station, so I'm just here to beg for forgiveness. Cheesy.
It's better than permission. We've said no, permission.
And, a- as the city manager has, has mentioned, um, what we're asking for is to reallocate
funds that we've already, um, been paying into the EMS system. Um, we're asking that you reallocate those funds and, um, invest those in the Milton Fire Department and, uh, the rescue system that we have, that we certainly can do. We have the staff, we have the equipment, minus the one vehicle, to, to do what we need to do for the citizens of Milton. Um, so what I'm going to do is just run through some cost analysis on how we can approach that, and hopefully, um, you'll, you'll agree with, um, with some of the numbers that we have here. To, to put, to, um, to hire one paramedic, um, the, the cost is going to be 55,837, um, dollars per year for one, one paramedic. And that, that's 42,000 dollars for, um, salary, and then plus the 13,837 for benefits. Um, that's a monthly cost of 46.53, and then the uniforms and turnout gear would be in a one-time initial investment of 4,000 dollars. Um, what we're, what we were currently paying, if I can get this thing to, there we go. Our subsidy was 132.250, and that was a monthly, um, payment of 11,020 dollars. So, for, for the remaining two months of this fiscal year, we would take the personnel costs, the monthly costs, which then comes to 27,918. Um, our subsidy stopped, our last payment was June 1st, so we're already into July, so we've already saved 11,000 dollars this, this month of July as it, as it is right now. The, uh, subsidy, um, for the remaining two months of the fiscal year, because none of this could be accomplished, we wouldn't be able to get anywhere until at least August with staffing and equipment and such. So, we would have a co- a savings of 22,040 dollars. Let me go back here, I think I lost something. There we go. Um, so the es- so the estimated cost for the remaining of this fiscal year is going to be 5,878 dollars. That, that's taking that, that subsidy amount in, you know, in, um, as part of this program. And then, there's a potential with the new contract, with the phase two of the contract with Rural Metro, is that anytime that unit would respond to a medical call, that the Rural Metro would, um, pay us 50 dollars an hour for our staffing to cover the cost. So, on average, there, we're, um, with the number of calls that we're, um, each month that we have, the time spent by Rural Metro on those calls equals 3,3880 dollars. Now, that's for every call in Milton per month. Now, we certainly would not transport or respond to every call, because Rural Metro's still there, they're still our provider. So, there is a percentage of that money that would be coming back in to help offset that, that cost of 5,878 dollars.
Chief, do they do that monthly? Or, I mean, how often, as needed, or how often would they reimburse us, once a survey six months, or once annually, or?
A- as in a payment back to us?
Yeah.
Um, I, I, we haven't, um, finalized that agreement yet, so, um, that hasn't been determined.
I think we push for monthly, though.
Probably, yes, that would help offset.
Right. I mean, we don't want them earning interest on our money.
I don't want to wait a year, and then all of a sudden, true, at the end of the year, correct?
Exactly.
Um, moving into fiscal year 2014, um, personnel costs would be 167,511 dollars. We have subsidy savings of 132.250. So, the, the cost minus the subsidy would be- So the, the cost minus the subsidy would be thirty-five thousand two hundred and sixty-one dollars. And then, on an annual basis, again, with all the calls that are just in the last year, now what, what we did was we took two thousand twelve call volume and we broke that down on how many times and how much time was spent on a medical call by those ambulance units, and that came out to, with the fifty dollars, and now if we ran every call in the city would be fifty, fifty thousand nine hundred dollars. And again, we would not respond to every call, Rural Metro's still out there, still the provider, but there's a percentage that we could gain from that or help offset some of the cost. So i- in a comparison, what we have here is the remainder of two thousand thirteen, and I can't see the bottom of that screen, but...
I can't even see that.
Just to recap that, in, in two thousand thirteen, the personnel cost would be twenty-seven thousand nine hundred and eighteen dollars. We'd have the offset by the subsidy of twenty-two thousand forty dollars, and so it would be an estimated cost for personnel of five thousand eight-hundred-and-seventy-eight dollars. We have a turnout gear and uniform cost for all three employees, and it'd be twelve thousand dollars, and then we'd have an initial cost of a hundred, approximately an estimated a hundred and ninety thousand dollars for that rescue unit. So, and with a medical reimbursement that we could offset some of that cost, could be as much as seven thousand seven hundred and sixty dollars for two thousand thirteen. And if you look at two thousand fourteen, again, one hundred and sixty-seven thousand five eleven for the personnel, the offset by the subsidy of one hundred and thirty-two two fifty, the total estimated cost would be about fifteen thousand six hundred and thirty-nine dollars. And then, we have the potential of earning a percentage at revenue or the offset that that contract would allow us with the fifty dollars an hour, we would, we could end up with a percentage of that fifty thousand nine hundred dollars, that's estimated time, volume, and, you know, costs that would come back into the city to help offset that. One of the, the ways of doing this, because normally you would not have a rescue unit with one person on it, what I'd like to do is just to keep the personnel cost down, because normally you'd have two people on that unit, is that we would staff it with one person, an EMT. We still have all our engines that are ALS, they have a paramedic and an EMT on every unit. If we end up going to a medical call that requires a transport, we would take the paramedic off the engine company, place them in the rescue unit, and then those two would go down to the hospital, transport the patient, and then come back and get back in service. Not every call is going to result in a transport, there's patient refusals and, and what have you, but here's an opportunity for us to put a unit in the city in critical times and we need one, when the call volumes are high and we don't have an ambulance that's close, and we're waiting for one to come up from Roswell Alpharetta, because they've all been moved down there where the call volume is, we've got, we've got a transport-capable unit that can provide advanced life support to a patient and get him to the hospital quickly. Our, our call volumes have, our, our response times have been within less than six minutes on our calls. Rural Metro, under this new agreement, has placed a unit in the city and we've seen a considerable incre- or improvement in response times with just that one unit. The new agreement allows for a twelve-hour peak hour unit, which will, what they estimate to cover seventy percent of our calls. My concern is the other thirty percent. It could just be one cardiac arrest within that thirty percent, that this will make a tremendous difference in the outcome of that patient. So that's why I think this is so important to the community.
Karen? Can I highlight one thing before you start asking questions? On this last slide, I believe in that second column, total estimated cost, I believe that should be really thirty-two, whatever the number is, thirty-five two sixty-one.
I was going to ask how that magically changed from the top slide.
Yeah, that's, I think that, that's, that fifteen is the wrong number, but it's correct on the slide before that, so I want to point it out. It should be a thirty-five thousand. I'm sorry, go ahead.
Go ahead.
And I do also want to point out, I was heading to process what I was going to say, if the question were to be, how would we fund the acquisition of this piece of equipment, the answer to that is we would fund that out of the currently existing and funded vehicle replacement reserve that is part of the capital projects account. So, we are more than adequately funded if we decide this is the direction to go, to either make a cash acquisition or to look and see what interest rates are, and it might make more sense to be, watch, watch cash flow, it might make more sense to lease purchase on a short-term debt obligation with GMA, it may make sense to purchase with cash.
Karen?
I really like the idea that we're putting our residents' safety as at the very top of what we do, because to me, it really is, I mean, it is. My only fear is that fifty dollars per hour, and I don't know how you bill for quarter hours, tenth of an hour, however that is, my only thought is, I'm afraid that it, it's going to incentivize Rural Metro just to let us take care of it rather than them doing it. Because at fifty dollars an hour, I'm sure it costs them more than fifty dollars an hour for them to come and do it. And so, I, I would say that we need to have something in here that if our guys had to respond over a certain number of times, they have a penalty. Because like I said, I think it's going to, I mean, to them, they'd be glad to let us do it, and, and they're still, they make a lot more money when we respond than when they respond.
I'm kind of on the same.
Yeah, I, I believe that, that, that could be a, a true concern, and I agree, I think that's something that we can write into the agreement.
Yeah, I, I think if, you know, I mean, this needs to be a, a great way to make sure that our residents are receiving the, the top care, but at the same time, we don't need to be paying Rural Metro not to come, and which is, you know, they could make a lot more money by not responding sometimes than by responding.
Correct, but, and we also have in our agreement today is a posting plan, which requires that unit that we're going to have in the city as a peak hour unit is going to be required to stay within the city until the call volume gets to a level three or less. So what we're going to end up with is, we're going to end up with eleven ambulances in the, in the North Fulton area, so once that level gets down to a level three, that's when that unit from Milton will start having to move southward to where the call volume is and get centrally located within the North Fulton area, opposed to it being just in the city. So there are some, you know, parameters and guidelines to keep that unit where it is, but there, there are certainly going to be times that that unit's not going to be available to us, and that, that's why this unit is so important.
Well, and I, and I agree, it is important, but we want to make sure that they're incentivized to try to be there to take care of our residents rather than them having a financial incentive not to be here, because they really get paid, you know, if they make two hundred and fifty dollars and reimburse us fifty, that's a pretty good deal for them. So, we want to make sure that we're not encouraging that kind of behavior.
I think, Chief, if you address that too, that you will, can look into that to make sure that we address that.
Correct, and one of the other things that's in there to help offset some of our costs is they're, they're going to pay for the fuel and they're going to pay for all the supplies. So the only really outward cost that we're going to have is the initial investment as well as the personnel cost.
Joe?
Yeah, a bunch of things jumped into my head when you started talking about this. I mean, I, I think there's probably some, some goodness here, but I'm just going to wave the red flag since those were the first things that jumped to mind. And a lot had to do with the owning and operating the vehicle itself. I want to just make sure, I'm, I'm sure if you guys worked on this, you captured all the costs, but obviously the maintenance costs, the ongoing costs, the future replacement, the outfitting of the equipment, there, there was all, having lived through this for a couple of, you know, fire trucks, I just know there's lots of hidden costs there. The second thing that's probably more important is the multi-role nature that the contract that we have with the EMS company it's going to turn into. What I mean by that is, all of a sudden, we're going to be involved in the delivery, to a certain extent, to the delivery of services that we've had a dispute with these guys, or, or at least we were unpleased with the results of the service they had provided us, and now we're going to be in partnership with this company, and that's going to start blurring the lines in terms of who's responsible for what, and why was service not delivered? Instead of being able to just point the finger at one person, all of a sudden, we're going to find ourselves pointing the finger at multiple people, and one of them's going to be us. And so, I've got some concerns about that, and then the last thing I would say is, I'm not sure if there's any kind of liability that we create in playing a role in the delivery of these kind of services to our own citizens, but certainly there's an isolation that we enjoy today because we contract with a company to do this, and all of a sudden, again, because we're blurring the lines between who's doing what, we may be taking on some liability that, that I would like to make sure is represented in terms of the cost and, and our forecasts and things like that.
I, I would just like to address the liability issue. That liability starts with us when we first arrive unseen, with our paramedics giving medications and so forth, but you, you're absolutely correct, that liability continues all the way to the hospital, but it, it doesn't go away, even if the Rural Metro transports that patient, we still have initial patient contact and patient care, so we still carry some of that burden.
You know, and Joe, your second point there about where we, yes, we did throw the red flag and object to the level of service our citizens were being provided, we absolutely did that. We have been through the process where the region has set up a subcommittee and the subcommittee has made a determination and a recommendation to take back to the full committee. Now, that's certainly not to indicate that the full committee will just, just part and parcel agree with the subcommittee and say, if they said it is, it is so, but we've seen enough forecasting now, this meeting happened last week, to know that at least the subcommittee is bringing forward to the real committee the recommendation to keep the zone closed. And that's going to mean that, you know, we objected and Rural Metro responded, so I'm going to give them credit for bringing assets and resources to the table to respond to better perform than they had performed prior. But if in fact the zone stays closed, we don't necessarily control the destiny of picking somebody else to work with. You know, we're, we're, we're forced into this getting along because we're forced into working with whoever the zone provider is. So, this, honestly, this is a model that is, you know, th- this model was worked on with the other, first, with the other outlined city. I mean, I, I hate to take credit for this concept, although we were kind of toying with it and how it might work, this is very similar to the structure that Johns Creek is trying to put into place to solve their outlying issues as well. Our, our two cities being the outliers are the ones that suffer from the lengthy response times. You know, the reality is in Johns Creek, they already own two of these vehicles and already have a plethora of staffing that they can just stand them up, which would be, I, I wish I was in that position, I wish I already had this vehicle, I wish we had enough staffing that we could just say, hey, we're going to replace this one system with something else. We're not to that position, that we have the vehicle or the staffing capable of, of putting this thing, putting this type of a system on the street. We think we can do it, again, within the, reasonably within the existing structure of expenses as they've been, and I hate to say that because otherwise, you know, we would, we would capture those funds back into the general fund, it could reappropriate them to something else. I get that, that it's not just money that's sitting there that has to be spent for this purpose. But to Councilmember Thurman's points, one of the core things that we have as a city is to protect this, this citizen's safety, both in the police and the fire. And you're going to see as we move forward in the next several fiscal years, hopefully some enhanced staffing in the police department to, to work towards that goal, as well as working with the fire department to try to place the right people at the right place that have the opportunity to save lives. The extended responses we have seen have been to the northern parts of Milton. If we look to the beginning of this fiscal, not this fiscal year, this calendar year, we'll see more than two pages of calls for service response times, I think we've shared that with you, that have twenty-plus and sometimes cases of thirty-plus minute response times, that's just, it's just not, it doesn't work. You know, we have a contract in place and have the ability to hold Rural Metro accountable to a certain response time, and it's, when you start to talk average response times versus fractile response times, you try to figure out, okay, what did all that, what's all that mean? If the average is twelve, that means fifty percent of the responses are more than twelve. You know, moving to the contract we moved to today is a better place to be than we could have been, because without a contract, we would have been held to the standard known as best effort, meaning they could get here tomorrow and they still would be in compliance with the, with what they were required to do if, in fact, there was bad weather, traffic, or didn't have any ambulances available. We're better today than we could have been if we had no contract in place. Our contract today is not as good as it was yesterday, when we had them under contract to respond on an eight-minute basis with the one hundred and thirty-two thousand dollar subsidy. The reality, though, was that we could keep paying that one hundred and thirty-two, we could have on paper eight minutes all day long, they just weren't meeting that mark in Milton. So, it's one thing to say it existed, but the reality is, is it didn't, and it would just be occasionally that we would see those responses here in Deerfield. You know, short of trying to maybe throw some additional money, you know, in a contract to... The thing is, is we'll never get to a point that we can dedicate a transport unit in Milton, because we're part of this thing known as the zone, and we can't in any way be able to say, okay, Rural Metro, here, we're willing to pay a subsidy, continue to pay a subsidy like Sandy Springs is, give us our own ambulance. Well, there is no such thing as our own ambulance, because the zone won't let them do that, they have to geographically post based upon call line, so...
Chris, go back real quick, and I just want to make sure I understand it again. Obviously, there was a history with Rural Metro, because Rural Metro, for us, is the only game in, in town that we can deal with.
That's correct.
There is no one else that we can, that we can deal with, and, and that is just because of the way the state law is written currently, right?
It's the way the law was written, and they, they went out to bid in two thousand, no, it was nineteen ninety-nine, I want to say, and it was, the EMS region through Fulton County Government went to bid and awarded, I believe they had five respondents, of which they determined two were qualified bidders, and the lower of the two bidders was Rural Metro, and it was awarded back then. And that contract then is awarded and it has no end. It ends when this thing known as the Region Three EMS Council opens the zone for more competitive bidding.
Right.
And the Region Three EMS Council is a group made up of twenty-nine, and let me say that again, twenty-nine individuals. So it takes just more than fifteen of them to cause anything to occur. So they, they have come together, they have, the process is not perfect, and I, we could get into a discussion of how I think the fox is watching the hen house, but...
Yeah, well, that was going to be my point, we can take them to task on this, and, I mean, we're not, we may be bound if, if we feel like we're getting the service that, that we should be getting, but if we're not, we're not bound to follow that blindly, we can throw something in their face.
No, but the, but the answer to the question when asked, which is, since the point that we sent the letter and raised the concern, the que- if the question from the Region Three EMS Council today is, are you more satisfied today than you were thirty days ago when you complained, the answer to that is quite clearly yes, because they have put some enhancements in place that has caused the responses, I don't have the data to point back to now that I had thirty days ago. And as long as there's progress being made, the council subcommittee seemed comfortable allowing the progress to continue before just stopping it and saying, well, good try, you have been, you've gotten a little bit better, but we're still going to go ahead and go, go out to bid. So that's, that's where we are. I mean, this thing could still end up out to bid the next six months, the next year.
I would say, Karen, Thurman's points are exactly valid in that, I mean, obviously we want to take care of our citizens, but, you know, Chief Edgar, you said, you know, seventy percent of the time Rural Metro will, will respond, and that thirty percent is what we do. My question is, is if we don't have the right incentives, like what there, what Karen Thurman said, is that, that seventy percent can become sixty-five percent, which would then put undue pressure on our one ambulance unit, and we wouldn't be able to serve them as well. So we have to make sure those incentives are right for Rural Metro to be able to keep up that, maybe it is seventy percent, that's a number as far as number, percentage of calls that we, we get that we monitor over time, but that's, that's critical.
Yeah, we'll, we'll have tremendous oversight on that to watch this carefully. Again, as the city manager said, Johns Creek is looking at this as well, and I think between the two of us, that they're not going to allow that unit to be abused, and I'm certainly not, my goal here is to make sure that that unit is available, but we're also holding Rural Metro, you know, their feet to the fire here, it, it's important that they perform, and they have to perform under Region Three's guidelines as well, and not only the contract that we have, but also under Region Three. And again, that concern is that, they say that peak hour unit will cover seventy percent of the calls, but again, that thirty percent is, is so important.
Right.
I mean, whether it be a child or, you know, anything, to have the capability and that asset here, to me, is, is just so important, and, and I guess that's why I'm here, is just looking for your support, that, to have that one piece of equip, piece of equipment that we don't have today, to make that great an impact, is, to me, is, is so important.
And let me, let me just say that, and, and certainly everybody's points are, are valid, and, and there's a lot of, you know, it's something we're going to have to monitor, you guys are going to have to cover, I've talked to Johns Creek about it before, they're, you know, dealing with the same issues. But the reality is, we're doing something that's a positive, it can save some lives, and, you know, as far as liability or whatever, we are going out and doing some, we're adding service and something that will keep our citizens safe. So, yeah, to everybody's point, the chief and our staff are going to keep, have to keep an eye on Rural Metro, and if they don't live up to their part, then there'll be, have to be repercussions and all that, but the bottom line is, it's, it's a good thing for our citizens and better, and basically, rather than paying the subsidy, we're, you know, putting an actual, another vehicle that we know is dedicated to Milton, so, you know, I think it's a great idea, but with everybody's points, and obviously, you guys know, you'll just have to, to monitor it and make sure that it's, it's all working the way it's supposed to.
Correct, and we have monthly meetings with Rural Metro to monitor these things, we look at the data, we look at the information to make sure that everything is within the guidelines of the contract and that we're performing as, as the contract states.
Okay, Karen and then Bill.
How will we build them, is it based on a quarter hour, hour, I mean, is there a minimum amount of time if our guys have to respond?
The way, the way the contract is being negotiated is... The way, the way the contract is being negotiated is from the time the alarm comes in. So, as soon as that station bell goes off, that clock starts ticking until the time that that unit goes back in service and available for the next call.
But is it billed on a quarter hour? Is there a minimum amount?
Sounds like it's exact.
Exact?
Yeah, I think it's going, well, we haven't, you know, gotten to the fine.
It needs to be billed based on a minimum amount, because of, you know, if our guys have to go out, then it needs, there needs to be a minimum in there.
Okay, Bill?
The way I believe it's written right now is, is from the time that the alarm, as the chief said, starts until the unit's back in service plus 15 minutes.
Plus 15, okay. So, there is a minimum of 15 minutes regardless?
Yes.
Bill?
Finer point here. Every time we get an alarm, and if there's a personal injury or life-threatening situation like that, is Met, Rural Metro called first?
Yes. They, if they're in the area or in the station or in the, in our, in the city of Milton, they will be the first unit to respond. The problem is if they're not available or we have, there, that call's at the south end of the city and this call's up at the north end of the city, we're, we're talking anywhere, you know, a 12 to 15-minute response time. If that's a critical call, that unit's already up in that area. So, so that unit would then take that call.
Okay. So, will this unit be stationary at what, 43?
Yes, at 43.
So, it won't be roaming the city then?
No.
Okay. I guess what I'm getting at here is, of course, you understand the maintenance and reliability of pieces of equipment like that. $190,000 is quite a big chunk of money. And I don't mean to diminish the value of a life. It's the fact that, I'm not sure the, the lifespan of, of a unit like this, and are we going to be spending 190 every, every three years, every two years, every five years?
Yeah, the average.
What's the lifespan of these?
Depending on the, the call volume.
Sure.
But the average lifespan is about eight years for a transport unit.
Chief. I'm sorry, Bill, where are you going? I'm confused now, because I understood this to be, we'd be in partnership with Rural Metro, and they would be, have access to our equipment and our personnel to dispatch as they need, all right? So, the ambulance isn't going to be at our station exclusively. It's going to be wherever Rural Metro has dispatched it. Now, that's going to be providing a primary focus on Milton as the service area, but I'm sure there's certain conditions under which our equipment's going to get dispatched into Alpharetta or Roswell or someplace else, depending on Rural Metro's business, you know, what's going on that day. So, so then I, I thought I heard you tell Councilman Luss that it would be exclusively at our station, and so I'm, maybe I'm, I'm trying to figure out which one's the reality.
Let me try to clear that. The, the 12-hour peak hour unit is going to be located at Station 42 in the center part of the city. That is part of the posting plan and part of Rural Metro's fleet as, to be utilized as needed where the call volume dictates it to go. Our unit will stay in the city of Milton. It will not leave the city, no matter what, unless it's called out for mutual aid and has some type of disaster, then that unit, obviously, we would send all the help we could to anywhere it need, it need to be.
Right.
But on a day-to-day basis, that unit will not leave the city limits.
Okay, all right. I'm, that, thank you for that.
Yeah, that's a designated, that, that's the whole goal, is to make sure we always keep a unit in the city.
Understood, understood, okay.
I'm sorry for that, that was.
No, no, I probably wouldn't listen.
All right, anything else?
One would say Milton in big letters on it, up at 43, and the one at 42 will say Rural Metro in big letters. No, the one at 43 will say Rural Metro in small letters, because it has to if we.
Definitely notice it.
If it's under the transport license.
If it's out of the city. All right, anything else?
Will it have the new logo on it?
Yeah, well, I could put the council members' names on it as well. I'm just kidding. Like a NASCAR.
It'll have the four, like, not three, like, horse.
Right. I guess, Council, what we're looking for tonight is, is not necessarily an official vote, but more a, either a support or a non-support, particularly if you're non-support, to start to push this forward. I mean, obviously, things, the game changed today, so we don't want to let a lot of grass grow under our feet. If you'd like time to think about it before you say yes, if you would like to say yes, just, if you wouldn't mind just giving us some direction so we can move forward, if you're comfortable with us moving forward.
I would, I would like a little more analysis, financial numbers to back this up. I'm sure Stacy's got it all put together, just.
Well, let me ask you this, in concept, though, assuming you can get financial, are you onward? For anybody that's not, we've got some fire officials back there that meet with them outside.
We'll, we'll put together, we'll put together the best financial analysis we can based upon the fact that we've not done this yet. So, you know, we'll have to use some of Rural Metro's data.
I'm saying a model, Chris. I'm not saying actual numbers, but I mean, we got a pro forma that we can put together, right?
We can.
Okay, so.
Quite easily, actually.
Go ahead, Bill.
How long has Johns Creek had their units open?
They're just, they're, they're negotiating this as we speak as well, the same cycle.
We talked to them about the concern of the whole billing.
So, we don't have any historic data on the costs?
Not on a, not, not on a city actually responding and transporting under a provider's license. This is kind of new and uncharted ground, and there's really not an example of it that exists anywhere around here. But we've been successful at doing those things before, so, no. We're kind of exploring this together to figure out, number one, how we make it legal, and number two, how we make it work.
And how we make it so that Rural Metro is incentivized to continue to.
And you know what? I can guarantee you, there's going to be a point where somebody's loved one's going to be in this nice bright red Milton ambulance, and it's going to make a difference. So, that's a priceless part. But anyway, it sounds like, and tell me if you're, if I'm wrong, that, that the council is in support of looking further into moving forward with this, but also if you guys can put together a little bit more financial information to make your final decision. So, you're not, the concept, we don't have anybody here, I think, that's against the concept, but just may want some more information, tighten up some financial information. Is that fair to say? Okay.
And what we'll do is that, that model, that financial model can get better too as we negotiate this contract, because maybe we can negotiate for a better rate than $50 an hour. Unfortunately, that number exists as a doable number in the city of Johns Creek. So, that was how that ended up in ours, is that there's another city that has all but consented to that being the, the cost they're willing to do it for. So, we'll see. I mean, we've negotiated before, you know, we'll, we'll see if we can't maybe do a little bit better.
I got just a quick, what would it take in, no, we're not there, but with this Region Three or Zone Three and everything, if we wanted to do all the ambulance service in Milton, would we legally be able to do that? Because we'd have to operate under somebody, this Rural Metro's license.
That's right. And, and the thing that is, I guess, advanced when you, when you bring that position up is, is the whole purpose is the government getting involved in a private, in what is today privatized and private industry is doing, that all of a sudden, if we decided we wanted to do it better, you know, that the, we could just petition the region to say, give it to the government and take it away from the private sector. Now, in the metro area, we don't really see that as, we don't see the, the problems in the metro area that they see in some of the rural parts of Georgia, which is there are areas, which is why this whole zone thing exists, there are areas in Georgia that wouldn't be serviced by an ambulance, because they are money-driven animals. And there are places in Georgia that you don't make money transporting, because the call volume just doesn't exist. That that was why the state stepped in and took the responsibility for the state to place a provider, so that there was actual service that was available in all parts of the state. Now, in the metropolitan area of Atlanta, we don't think about that. We think, gosh, we, these five cities, if there were five cities that could come together and figure out how to do this and be the best in the world at it, these are the five cities that could do it. I mean, they get along well, and we've demonstrated that we can regionalize and perform well on projects together. You know, if there's somebody that could try this and make a model of it, I believe that these five cities could, but we just don't have that. We don't have that ability right now. It would, it's just against the, it would be against the law, so.
Again, this is maybe a first step, but I applaud you guys for all your hard work. The only other comment I would make is, well, I can't say I haven't gotten any complaints about Rural Metro. I have gotten nothing but positive comments over the last several years about our fire personnel and, and when they get to an emergency and they're there usually first, and our public safety. So, that's a great thing, so, thank you.
Well, if I may add, there's nobody that can do it better than our Milton firefighters.
Yeah.
I believe it.
Okay. I believe we, Chris, you got anything else?
Yeah, I just want to briefly update you that tomorrow at 10 o'clock in the morning is the initial informing, informing meeting of the North Fulton Unified Radio System, 911 authority, or the authority that was about, created for the radio system. Tomorrow will form as our first meeting. The authority actually went into existence today. There was great news from Fulton County, if there is such a thing, that, gosh, does that, was that my outside voice? I said that out loud. You know, they, they voted to award their contract for their radio system, and as part of the motion, and I applaud them for doing it, and what, what was approved, was that they work concurrently with the Fulton Authority so that we avoided duplication of service. So, if there's any questions to whether or not we're going to build radio systems redundantly on top of each other, that looks to be an issue that's behind us, which is exciting that we can move forward.
How does that affect Johns Creek, who hasn't determined what they're doing yet?
I do, I, I worry about.
Remember, they're one of them, working for Fulton County, which means.
Yeah, exactly.
You know, we're making good, good progress negotiating a lease with the tower that exists in Cherokee County just off of Mountain Road. So, if I'm successful in doing that and the authority moves to approving that lease document, you all will be officially able to say that you have a world-class radio system covering your community, and it doesn't even require a tower in it, which is, I think that's a good success point. So, that, that's, that's working. I had mentioned to you that you were going to see the Home Rule charter changes here in the next meeting or so. I'm actually going to stall those, because I want to bring one of them forward to you in a work session, just to make sure that we don't solve a problem that doesn't exist, because there's one of the recommended charter changes that I believe is solving a problem that doesn't exist, and I want to make sure we just don't create a problem for ourselves, because we feel like we want to.
So, we have a solution.
Right, so we have a solution. Yeah, we're solving a problem that I don't know that it exists. So, I want to bring that forward in work session, so look for that. That's the reason, it's, no, you're not going to see it on your next agenda, but they are still coming. And the other thing that we're going to move forward on, at least to pursue and, and understand, is this area that is in Deerfield Parkway here, from Woodward Parkway, basically up to Webb Road and a little bit all the way up Highway Nine to the city limits, is eligible potentially for inclusion as an opportunity zone. I don't know if you know what opportunity zones are, if you like them, don't like them. I believe that, and I believe my colleagues would believe, that it's a useful tool in the toolbox of economic development. You know, if you, if you qualify, you have to meet a certain set of criteria, but the rewards and the job tax credit that would exist for companies that would either come in and redevelop or develop within the opportunity zone are quite tremendous. We saw that play out with the GM thing in Roswell. I believe that, at least on the map, we qualify. We have to put together an application and, and take our chances. We met with the mayor and the staff members and Representative Jones, just to find out what she would think about it, and whether or not she would support it, because it largely takes her support to get it done, based upon some new legislation that occurred in this most recent session. The Speaker is in favor of it and would support us with it, and is willing to make the right calls and write letters at the right time, and that's a long way towards success if we choose to go down this road.
That wouldn't have any impact on our Form-based code that we put in there?
It would not. It would not. Actually, the Form-based code works, works quite well with it, because somebody could come in and develop or redevelop an unused or underused property.
Right.
And, and realize some pretty substantial benefits for it. What it does is it focuses, if, if we're going to allow some development and allow some, some density and allow some of that, those things that we talk about in this area that could drive us as a city that allows us to keep the more rural areas of Milton rural, now, this is just one more thing that would make it, make us attractive to a place. You know, I, I heard that opportunity zones, you can put them in places that if people don't want to go there, it doesn't matter if there's an opportunity zone, they're not going to go there. But if you have one in a place that people want to be, and that's Milton, Georgia, it is an effective tool in, in attracting good quality business to, to an area. And honestly, we qualify for it because of our proximity to a census tract in Forsyth County. So, we're adjacent to one that qualifies, and therefore we have the ability to, to, to look at it ourselves. So, without objection, we're going to continue to pursue that. There will be plenty of time to object and plenty of time to vote no if it all of a sudden goes south, so. But at this point, it all seems like a positive movement. So, we'll move forward on that, and I've now clearly said enough. We need to, if anybody has any questions, happy to answer them. If not, I'm ready for exit.
Do you have one question too? Any more, any more progress on, or thoughts as far as the tornado sirens? We talked about that a long time ago and hadn't heard anything about that, so it's just curious.
Yeah, there are actually lots of progress, as a matter of fact. We've got the first response to the bid in. I actually directed Matt to go ahead and, and take the first bid that we had, that was funded last year in the Capital Projects Fund. I said, go ahead and, and rather than doing it in a fa, in a two-phase thing, go ahead and, and do what it takes to tornado siren in Milton, I believe, and we'll bring forward in the fiscal '14 budget, I believe, of a second-year funding, which I think you all were prepared for, is going to come forward in '14. And, and we're just going to, if you all support it, we're just going to implement. And we'll implement in, in one phase as opposed to two. It just took a little while to design the, the system, because of topography and areas of city-owned property versus not, and where you can put the, where you can put the sirens, et cetera, et cetera. Matt can give you a very good update on it, but he's on it, and I believe you'll see implementation quickly after the approval of the second funding. As a matter of fact, it was a little bit of a risk to stick the bid the way we did, which was to do, was to contemplate a more robust system that we have funding for. But I thought I was reading the council well, when, when I was reading that you all would approve the second phase of funding. So, we'll bring that forward. Ken's got, Mr. Mayor, Ken's got one thing he needs to update the council.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, thank you very much. Just be patient with me. Very quickly, I'll get through this. This involves property at 1422, 2200 Cogburn Road, owned by Mr. and Ms. Minnie Green and Justin Adams. As you know, the city has for some time been actively engaged with that property with respect to basically the conditions of the exterior of the property. We had secured a court order some time ago, and in conjunction with Mr. Lucas, we have been basically issuing RFPs and, and getting feedback from third parties to go out and literally clean up the property. That is not the entire extent of the city of Milton's, though, involvement with the property and the course and scope of just interactions with that property. Significant concerns have come up with respect to the habitability of the actual physical structure itself, literally the residence. And it is the position of myself, as well as staff, that the pertinent law that we need to comply with requires that, to the extent that the chief building officer of Milton has gone out and inspected the premises, which they have, before we begin to take some of the legal steps that we have to take, we believe the pertinent law requires that the chief building officer, bound through me, delegated to me this evening, update you on what those requirements are, what the findings have been with respect to that property. And so, we have to issue a letter, which we plan on issuing tomorrow, to the residents, placing them on 30 days' notice of these concerns. But again, I believe the pertinent law requires that I update you this evening on what those concerns were. So, if you'll just bear with me for a second, I need to very briefly go over these with you, because these are the products of literally our staff, our chief building officer, going out to the residents and inspecting not only the exterior, but in fact, the interior of the residents. And these are the findings that have come back. There are six of them, and again, they go to the habitability of the property, as well as just, quite frankly, issues such as the public health, safety, and welfare implicated by these issues. Number one, the exterior of the second floor sheathing and roof sheathing has not been covered, causing weathering and delamination. That is a express finding. Number two, the bottom of the second floor sheathing exposed in the garage and, and some of the floor joists elsewhere in the dwelling have been water damaged and so show signs of active mold. Number three, due to the exterior of the second floor not being fully covered and utilization of an improper flashing method at the roof-wall intersection in this area, water has infiltrated the building envelope, damaging the dining room ceiling. Severe water, severe water staining of the ceiling tiles is apparent, and the excess water weight has caused several of the tiles to fall to the floor. Other tiles are in place and are discolored. The insulation above these tiles has been saturated with water. Number four, water infiltration has damaged and compressed the dwelling's insulation, thereby reducing its R-value, and more importantly, providing a breeding ground for mold, and do in fact demonstrate visible signs of mold and mildew. Number five, cardboard boxes in rooms experiencing roof leaks have been saturated with water and present a breeding ground for mold and mildew, and do in fact demonstrate visible signs of mold and mildew. And number six, the electrical panel cover has been removed and a light switch has exposed wiring and is not installed in an approved electrical box as required. This is a, this is actually excerpts from a letter that will be issued to the property owners tomorrow, as well as other interested stakeholders, that we're required to provide notice. notice of this. There has already been previous notification of these same concerns, but we do not think they have been remediated at all. And of course, there is an outcome of this. The City of Milton, of course, our first objective would be compliance. We would simply like the property remediated, but if it's not remediated, there may be significant consequences with respect to a possible condemnation of the house and ultimately an eviction from the property. That's my report to you. Again, I believe that the pertinent law requires this report to have gone to the council and the letter will go out tomorrow.
Thank you. I have a motion to move it to executive session to discuss litigation and land acquisition.
So moved.
Motion is second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Yes.
Sure.
I move that we convene.
I'll second it.
I have a motion by Councilman Larges to reconvene, seconded by Councilwoman Thurman. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, like manner. Motion passes.
I move that we adjourn.
Motion by Councilman Larges to adjourn the regular meeting.
Seconded.
Seconded by Councilman Hewitt. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed, like manner. Motion passes.